Good afternoon. This is Wednesday, November 29, 2023, and you are with the Clark County Washington Council for the Council Time Agenda. It begins at 1:00. We don't have a huge, long agenda this time, so stick with us, and I think we'll all learn a lot of interesting things as we did at our work session this morning with Richfield City Council. That was at 9:30 this morning, and very, very informative. So as we look at the start, it is with public comment, and this comment is to be on agenda items only, meeting the agenda that is before us now, not a different agenda. Staff, do you see anyone interested in speaking?
There is no one in the room, Chair, and I'm not seeing anyone online either.
Okay, we move to old business. Minutes from November 1st, 2023, is there a motion for approval?
I'm of approval of the minutes.
A second. Any objections?
Chair.
Yes?
I would just like to make a clarification. There, I thought this was, I'm glad that, thank you, Kristen, for bringing this up on the screen because I thought it was November 15th, but there was an absence that was mentioned that does not have excused or unexcused on it. And I don't know whether that absence would have excused or not. And so, I mean, the minutes should be corrected to reflect whichever way it is.
I'm trying to find your reference at this point.
Right up the, Kristen's got it on the screen right there. There's just an "undetermined" in parentheses in that first paragraph.
Oh. Do you see that, Kristen? The last word of that first paragraph.
I do, yes, and I don't know if we can review the last meeting, this meeting, and update it, or review last communications. I'm not 100% sure. Yeah, I believe it was, Chair, this is Kathleen. I believe it was determined or noted as undetermined because we did not know why the counselor was absent.
Right, and we can always put "at that time" because subsequently, we would have known whether it was excused or not, but not at the time of the meeting. And this is to reflect the knowledge that we had at the time of the meeting, so that would take care of it. And with that, and thank you for raising that question, Counselor Young, is there, did we have a motion for approval?
Seconded, Chair.
Okay, all those in favor. Pardon me?
Yeah, we're ready for a vote.
Yes, that's what I was asking for. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the minutes are passed. Minutes from November 15, 2023.
I'm of to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
And is there any correction, edits, anything? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is passed. The Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan, financial update, which is a follow-up from our work session. Kathleen or Ken?
Good afternoon, Chair Bowerman. This is Ken Later, Public Works Director. We're here this afternoon to go, kind of an extended work session, to go over some of the financial questions that came up the last time we presented on the Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan. With me today are Gary Albrecht from our Planning Department. Oliver is here as well in the audience. Matt Griswold, our consultant from PBS Engineering, and also Steve Gallup, our Transportation Division Manager. So I'll be available for questions. Gary's going to present today.
Thank you, Jen, low council, Gary Albrecht, Clark County Planning. This is the agenda for today's meeting. The overall purpose, progress, up-to-date, and, you know, just kind of, just to highlight some background of what a, in Neighborhood Traffic Management Program has owns, call it an NTMP, and go over some cost estimates at the end of it. Next slide, please. So Clark County periodically receives concerns from residents about excessive vehicle speeding and high-cut through traffic on neighborhood streets. The NTMP developed for Clark County will provide a framework which can be consistently applied in addressing a myriad of traffic safety concerns as well as quality of life issues as they are encountered by residents in the county. We really want a system that is fair and equitable across the entire community that is data-driven, engages neighborhood associations through a fundamental program to identify, prioritize, and implement feasible traffic management solutions. Next slide, please. Developing a Neighborhood Traffic Management Program has been part of Public Works and Community Planning's work program for two years. Through a competitive bid process, we hired PBS, an engineering consulting firm, to help develop a Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. They developed an NTMP concept report for Clark County. We've held two council work sessions, March 22nd, 2022, and May 24th, 2023. This council meeting provides additional financial information about creating a Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. Next slide, please. Clark County does not have a Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. The first, Clark County developed a Neighborhood Traffic Management Program in 1994. This program was in place until about 1999, when funding stopped. However, our current code appears to include identical language from that original program, which is codified in Clark County Code 40.350-030B13. This is in front of us now. Next slide, please. Throughout the years, Clark County has received requests, suggestions, and complaints from residents regarding traffic concerns in or near their neighborhoods. The NTMP will engage the Neighborhood Association of Clark County Council during identification and development of each individual strategy, and will address the particular problems they are facing. The county's NTMP is based on a combination of parallel strategies which range from education to engineering solutions. Education ranges from sharing information and raising awareness about the safety, best ways to share the road by targeting distracted drivers and informing pedestrians and bicyclists. The NTMP Strategies Toolkit will include programs that remind speeders and distracted drivers of the negative effects of their actions. And then we, and then the program includes engineering, which is identified physical measures constructed to lower speeds, improve safety, or otherwise reduce the impacts of motorized vehicles. The toolkit is based on construction of physical change to roadway to deter speeding. We'd also offer enforcement, targeting enforcement to reinforce the emphasis of education and engineering aspects of the program. County staff would collaborate with Clark County Sheriff's Department to enforce speed limits. And then there's a, as far as the implementation goes, I think I'm, what, can you slide a mile on? It's hard to see. Is there a number at the bottom? Seven, we're on slide six? Okay, thank you. And so our framework would include an equity component. It would include a systematic evaluation of how different neighborhoods will be affected by the section and implementation of Neighborhood Traffic Management projects. Next slide, please. The NTMP concepts were developed with four basic stages. Resident requests during this step, residents or the Neighborhood Association of Clark County, we call it NAC, will submit a request for action addressing their concerns. County staff would work with the neighborhood in defining the problem and study the area, which may be a specific intersection or a much larger area, such as a neighborhood. Next, we'd go into the evaluation, which would be, which would include a list of potential Neighborhood Traffic Management Strategies that would be compiled to address the traffic concern identified by the resident or the NAC using the NTMP Strategies Toolkit as a guidance based on gathered data, type of traffic problem, and road classifications. We'd have that education, an engagement component where projects would be scored by county staff. We'd post a list of projects online on a NTMP webpage and notify those neighborhoods whose projects are moving forward on this year's program. And we'd have the implementation stage. After sharing the results with the requesters, with county staff, we'll present the prioritized list of projects to county council by June 1st of each year. Slide 8. Next slide, please. Thank you. We really want a system that is fair and equitable across the entire community that is data-driven, engages neighborhood associations through a fundamental program to identify, prioritize, and implement feasible traffic management solutions annually. Next slide, please. This slide, the next three slides will demonstrate the costs and benefits of establishing a mid-level program. We call that a Level 2 program. So this Level 2 concept would cost about $500,000. It includes $250,000 for two FTEs, and I'm going to let Ken talk to that. So it's, you know, it's, with the FTEs, we understand that they were not included in the budget, and we're just coming forward with this story as a continuation of the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. So we're not implying anything. We're just sharing information of what it would cost if the county chooses to go forward at a later time. So this is more of a store continuing story. So I'm not trying to push this agenda off of anybody. We're just sharing our information. So the Level 2 would include education enforcement to include neighborhood and community involvement, special neighborhood signs, and increased police enforcement. Thank you. The Level 2 estimate includes signing and striping, minor modifications such as centerline raised pavement markers and speed radar signs. Next slide, please. We've looked at horizontal measures which help define the roadway space to help reduce speeds and create more of a sense of place to help road users slow their speeds down. And this can be accomplished through gateways and entryway treatments, traffic circles, and pedestrian refuge islands. Next slide, please. We've also got vertical measures such as speed humps, raised crosswalks, and we could use parking restrictions as treatments and vegetation maintenance to help improve sight distance and visibility of this overall street. Next slide, please. And this is our final slide. So what we're here requesting is council support and direction to create a Level 2 concept for a Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. And, you know, we're open for any kind of feedback on how we could make this happen at some point in the future. We're here to answer any questions.
Are there questions?
Sorry, Chair Bowerman. If I could just add a little bit to what Gary was saying. We understand that the recommended budget for this year will not include those FTEs. This was part of the, we wanted to make sure that we presented what we felt were the needs for this Level 2 program. And I also want to make sure that council understands, we do some of these activities now when we get customer service requests, and you also are all aware of the customer service requests that you get through your own council forums, and sometimes those do turn into projects. This is a much more well-established way for us to look at the county at a holistic level and make sure we are prioritizing areas, not just, I guess, addressing the squeaky wheel, as it were, on what comes through on a forum. So I think that's all I have to add for now, and certainly will take any questions.
Chair.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. I was curious, the city of Vancouver has their NTSA, the Neighborhood Traffic Safety Alliance. Have we compared to their model and looked to see, like, how many FTEs they're using for that plan, and such? Has there been a comparison at all?
When we put it together, can you hear? Well, my name is Matt Griswold. I'm with PBS. And when this was all evaluated, we did look at the city of Vancouver's program. And right off the top of my head, I don't know how many FTEs they have, but they are heavily funded by grants where they don't have set budgets, and they are based off of a grant, so they have to actually go after grants to make these improvements. What we were looking for here is a set budget where we would have X amount of dollars that we could put towards projects annually and be having an ongoing program where it wasn't necessarily funded by grants, where this would have a more stable budget.
Okay, I know it's been some time since that study's been done, and that kind of brings up another thing to me is that, and I, you know, I know that we contracted with PBS, so some money was spent with that, and kind of leads forward toward December 6 discussion on the budget. It's really frustrating when we're allocating funding to developing plans that we know that are really needed for our county, and then when it comes forward to us, there's not the funding available to fund those programs. So this is something that is near and dear to me. Neighborhoods, I think, I've said this multiple times, it's really the backbone of our counties is neighborhoods, and the safety of them is paramount. And I'm frustrated, and I understand that we don't have the funds to pay for it at the time, and I'm not suggesting amendment to cover that, but it's just, it's a very frustrating conversation when we know there's things that are really needed, and we are unable to fund them. So I don't know, you know, I would have interest in looking at this again next year to see if we can fund it for sure, but I'd also like staff to look to see if there's any way that we could, you know, implement kind of a pared-down program and, you know, with the intention of full funding coming eventually, but something that we can at least work with in the time being.
Yeah, I appreciate that suggestion. That's certainly something that we can look at. And we do have a Level 1 service that is more aligned with some of the current things we're doing. And I'll have to look again. I don't know what that request was for new FTEs, but I do know it did have at least the web and intake components associated with it. And Matt, you might recall that off the top of your head.
I can speak to that. Level 1 was very similar to what the county is currently doing. Very minimal FTE increase. I think it was only maybe .5. But it was, the main difference in that versus what is currently being done is Level 1 did give us a website on the county webpage that if we had complaints come in, it could go directly to that webpage, and it could be tracked. And there was the possibility with that of some public involvement, going out and meeting with the neighborhood associations and telling them a little bit more about the Level 1 program.
If I could add to that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Counselor Young, if I could add to that, I think, you know, our concern with that Level 1 service is that the equity component really isn't well-met because we don't have the engineering time involved to the analysis to make sure that what we're addressing is something that, again, could be addressed on a level looking at other neighborhoods that might have similar concerns.
Okay, so would it be your suggestion at this point that we just keep everything as is with the intention of funding the program later? Or do you think that it is a good idea to try to implement something in between?
My personal opinion and recommendation would be that we do continue as we are right now, rather than providing kind of a mechanism to get more intake that's specific. We might create a greater equity issue by doing that. But to continue as we are right now. But I would really hope that we could address this again next year and look at getting it back into the budget so that we can address our local roads as opposed to just our arterials and collectors.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I would be supportive of taking a look at this in the next budget cycle. I know that, you know, especially in some of the areas that I represent, there's been so much growth, and I know you've responded. I think as best you can, there's new stop signs that come up, and I think having the striping to go along with those so that people aren't too startled when new stop signs come up. So I can appreciate the response that you have been providing. I know in the more rural areas, I'm thinking of the Yakhold area. I don't know that they even have a neighborhood association, but there's been a lot of concerns related to the rock quarry up there and large trucks moving too fast down the road. So I think that coordinating with the sheriff's department, and I don't know if you've talked with them throughout this process, but I think a little bit of enforcement on the traffic side of things can go a long way. And I think that has been lacking when we've been low on deputies. But I think if that can be enhanced and coordinated better that, or maybe at all, I don't know, that that could help quite a bit going forward. But I get, you know, this is what I hear from people, the neighborhood associations. This is where they see their local government stepping up or not. So I think this is a really important area. I would really like to see that website so that we could track these concerns.
Thank you, Counselor. And if I could just add, anytime that we have something that we think traffic enforcement can help with, we definitely connect with the sheriff's office on those customer service requests to request additional traffic enforcement if it's available.
Thank you.
Other questions from the council?
I'll just weigh in because I don't know if we're giving thumbs up or direction at this point or not. I have almost no interest in this right now. You know, just going through these ARPA documents, which are very disappointing to me on monies that we're spending to replace monies that allegedly got lost during the pandemic. Almost all of these topics are law enforcement-related. And, you know, 95% of our complaints, we wouldn't get if there was traffic enforcement of speeding and other reckless driving. The sheriff absolutely has been addressing. Every time I've gotten a constituent complaint that went to Public Works, that went to the sheriff, they increased traffic patrols. They are rebuilding their force and re-energizing their traffic division. You know, we have laws in place, and aside from all that, as far as engineering and designing, I'm hoping that our staff is doing the very best job they can with the time and personnel that they already have. So I'm not, I have no interest in adding an additional program at this point. And I don't see that happening next year either. I would like to see, once the sheriff gets all of his new hires out of the academy and can really vigorously enforce the laws, I would like to see what kind of benefit that has in calming all the complaints throughout the neighborhoods.
Chair, other comments from this council?
Yes, Chair.
Go ahead.
I would, I would just like to respond to that. You know, as I attend the neighborhood meetings, I, this, this is the most common complaint given at all of the neighborhood meetings. And when I've seen the sheriff there, and also when I've seen VPD present, what they say every single time is that they respond when a neighborhood, you know, complains or is frustrated about speeding and other violations that happen in their neighborhood, that they will do their best to get out there, and they will enforce it. For, you know, they'll, they'll make a direct effort to enforce that area, and they say the same thing every time, that it helps. And then after a short period of time, that they're not there anymore, that it goes back to the way that it was. So enforcement helps, but it's a temporary effect. It's really environmental changes that have to happen in order for long-term change to happen.
Well, given the nature of this update, and I thank you for it, it doesn't seem that there is action needed now except for somebody to be accountable for making sure that it appears next year for evaluation again. I think there are two or three people who indicated an interest in that at least. So let's make sure that that happens, and is there anything else?
Here, I have a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
I too go to a lot of the Neighborhood Association meetings in my district, and I have, I have seen the sheriff's office, CCSO, patrolling specifically in my neighborhood, and it stays consistent in the neck of my county. So I haven't seen where it goes right back again. I think he's very communicative with the Neighborhood Association presidents to keep things consistent. I agree with Counselor Medvee. He is rebuilding his force, and I've already seen leaps and bounds in improvements, specifically around District 2. I've really appreciated that. I think things are absolutely improving every day. So my opinion closely aligns with Counselor Medvee.
Well, it's good to hear you say what you are saying about your district, Counselor Belkup, because I think most of us feel that way about each district that we represent, and that would indicate that things are happening right in the county as a whole relative to the sheriff's office patrolling and taking advantage of, for the citizens of the increased staffing that we finally have. It is so wonderful to have seen that develop. And so let's just keep an eye on this particular topic for next year, for the budget. And is there anything else?
Yes, I'd just like to make one final comment because I don't think it's either/or. I think it very much is a partnership between county roads and public works and the sheriff's department, and they probably all need additional resources. I would just say for my district, everything's not 100% rosy on this front, and we do have some needs that will take addressing by the sheriff's department and by county roads to deal with just because there's so much change that has been occurring that is impacting the neighborhood. So thank you for your work, and I look forward to seeing this again.
Any further comments?
Thank you. We appreciate, I was just going to say, we appreciate all the comments, and I've got your feedback here. We will keep this definitely on our radar for next year as well as continued coordination with the sheriff and his staff.
Thank you, Ken. Appreciate that. Now let's move on. We'll move to Thank you, Ken. Appreciate that. Now, let's move on. We'll move to item 2.4 for an ARPA update.
So, Council, this is Kathleen. This is a part of Counselor Mevagee's request to look at what type of ARPA funding could be reallocated for potentially another purpose. I'll let him discuss what that is. I did send out some information. My apologies, Counselor Mevagee, that you didn't find that very helpful. That was not the intent. But what's before you right now is the ARPA grant fund balance projection. The second slide shows kind of like a quick summary of what it is. And what I have done is I did ask all the departments and offices to share what the impact would be if any of the ARPA funding was reallocated, which I did send to council. So just for a talking point on that, there is probably some additional information. It's a lot of information I just sent. So depending on today's discussion, you may want to continue that discussion next week. I also just want to mention, and I've mentioned this to councils as well, that our prosecuting attorney, Tony Golick, who's also here in the room, is also hoping to continue his ARPA funding for six attorneys and five support staff through 2026. Currently, he has ARPA funding through the end of 2024. So I just want to make sure that that has been stated for council's consideration as you're looking at other programs or shifting funding around. So with that, I would just hand it over to Counselor Mevagee, who has the request of potentially looking at a different allocation.
Thank you. If I may, Chair?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I was looking for something totally different. And I appreciate all the staff justifying what they're spending their money on and all the bad things that are gonna happen if we reallocate this money. So I would like to, first and foremost, just say, let's take this on and schedule it for another day, because I did just skim through all the material you had sent earlier today. But just to get to the point, I mean, all the money that we, that 15.2 million for a homeless response, that was a one-time infusion to directly impact our needs in the homeless community. And almost everything I saw on that document was just funding replacement. I don't know where all those grants or funding streams would have been otherwise, but most of the money that we have spent from ARPA or allocated is just funding replacement. That wasn't the intent of it. I don't think any of the counselors thought that what we were doing. So, and I know that, you know, we had, like, the document recording fee, we saw dramatic decline in that amount. And so, okay, yeah, that would be a good place to replace funding that we lost. The bonuses, you know, from where I understand right now, the sheriff has essentially hired every vacant position. So I don't know how much of that money allocated from ARPA is gonna be spent. You know, about the only legitimate, direct response seemed to come from the treasurer, hey, there's 60 grand, I'm gonna turn back, you can have it. So I was looking for monies that hadn't been spent yet, despite the fact that people would like to use it for all these various great uses, because I had affordable housing projects on the table that needed funding now, and that would be an in-perpetuity kind of funding. So I think, from my point of view, I would like to sit down with the finance, someone from the finance team and go through this, whether it's Laura or not, and go one-on-one and see, where is the money? The other part of this that I would have liked to see, because there were some departments that said, hey, we're not using all this amount, we can turn this back, I would like to see what all that adds up to. I wasn't able to get my calculator out and do the math myself. So anyway, it was just a first blush, I just got it from you, but it wasn't what I was looking for.
Well, that's an interesting problem, because that calls for additional detailed information that should go beyond just one counselor and be shared with all. So Kathleen, how do you propose going about that?
Well, I have today most of the senior leadership team and most of the departments and offices online to answer any specific question. Yes, what they provided was, if the funding you have received that has been approved by council were to be reallocated, what does that mean? Because I do think that that is important for council to understand that if you're gonna reallocate funding that was already allocated and approved, there is gonna be an impact. So they responded based on my question of what is the impact. It was not intended to be a selling point of why it shouldn't be reallocated. It's to be transparent. So I haven't read everything in detail either. We were just getting this yesterday and today, some of the details, because the spreadsheet, other than on the second slide here, that has the purpose. So I guess I would ask council, what would you like? Because I can certainly add up some cost and put that in a spreadsheet based on the information, but I do think it's important to understand the impact so that council can make a decision as a whole.
Well, it seems to me that if there is a particular allocation that is bothersome to a counselor, that we could take up discussion of that, rather than going one by one and saying, what if this allocation were different? But to focus instead on wherever the council appears to see a problem or an issue or something that should be different from the way it is. So could we have a list like that from the counselor who is concerned, or counselors, perhaps? Perhaps there's more than one?
Sure.
Yes.
So I would just chime in and say, I am supportive of this conversation and of, you know, some staff resourcing put into this to kind of define a little bit. I think there are a lot of allocations that we're not gonna end up exactly right. And I think fine-tuning would be helpful. And in a whole overall process of looking how we're using those funds, do we even need to reallocate funds from, you know, priorities that may not, that may more better reflect the council now? And, but we may not even have to go that way. We may just need to reallocate some little small amounts here and there that are left over. So I would be supportive of not killing this, but, you know, tabling it, getting some more detailed information. Perhaps Counselor Mevagee can work with staff, as long as it doesn't become extremely extensive, and bring it back to a council time later on.
I have a different suggestion. So I don't know the full dollar amount that, for instance, Habitat for Humanity, VHA, and GIN was one of the private developers, what they were asking for to fund their project. I don't think I heard a definite dollar amount, maybe Glenn did. So I would want to know, what is that amount to fund that? I would also want to hear from the treasurer. Do you think, because they've already spent about $1 million and funded 33 homes, is there more of an investment we should make with ARPA funds into her program? I'll call it her program, but the mortgage assist program that we're familiar with, that we approved. I would like to find out what those $2 amounts are. And then I would put it back to Laura or whoever and say, okay, where is that money unspent in the allocations across the county right now? And then tee that up and say, okay, council, here is the $4 million we can find across these programs that remains unspent that you could reallocate, instead of seeing all the heartfelt programs that are justified by the document that we have. So do you understand what I'm suggesting? Let's find the dollar amount for those two programs, and then let's look for the money that is not already spent. And then we just focus on that, and then we can make a decision on the council whether we want to do that or not.
I think that's far more doable than taking on each and every project.
So, if I can, Chair, this is Kathleen. What is before you right now shows the unspent balance per department and per ARPA. So that second slide, that's on your slide right now, that I sent, I believe, earlier today, that has the unspent balance on the right. This one just has the purpose of the grant. The first slide also has the remaining unspent as well, but this one, so that information is already there. So, Council, are you asking me to go back to all the, back to all the leadership team and say, what can you give up? I mean, that's kind of, that's the whole purpose of getting that information from them, is, like I said, it's not for them to sell it, it's for them to explain the impact so that council understands, yes, we have this dollar amount unspent. If you reallocate, this is what's gonna go away. So that is the purpose of that thing. But right here, you have the unspent amount per request or approved items.
Maybe I misunderstood, but I thought that the counselor was suggesting that two programs be examined in a little greater detail, not all programs with their unspent balance. And two programs-
Well, one of the programs that, so the one program that Counselor Mevagee mentioned is not a current program that we have allocated ARPA. That's why, I believe, it's being asked, what money do we have available to fund or to reallocate to fund a new program? Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. If there is going to be an ultimate ask, if we are able to identify any funds, I know there may be a couple of counselors who have been working on that, but I haven't seen anything. And I would like to see the details of what that ask might be. Another concern, well, I'm concerned about the timing of this. If this is something that can be carried over to the new year, I would, it just seems like this is very much at the last minute related to this, adopting this budget. And just as, I know just a little bit of information I was able to get through related to housing, the unhoused, I know it appears $2 million has already been expended that we haven't reimbursed for. So there may be other issues related to that. And I would say that, you know, that for some of these organizations that are relying on these funds, that they have budgeted for, that they, I think, were assured that would be available in the next several months, we may be wanting to make a shift in how we approach homelessness and making more of a long-term, permanent investment in housing, which I would absolutely support. But I feel, to some degree, that it may be robbing Peter to pay Paul, and that these, some of these nonprofits are vulnerable, and there's high immediate need in the community. So that's kind of collectively, if there's money that can be identified that isn't going to be put to the uses that we anticipated, if there's higher priorities, I'd be okay looking at that. But I just think we can't do this in too much of a rushed manner. And whatever the ultimate ask is for the use of some of these funds, I'd like to know about.
Other comments from council?
It was hard to digest all that. I'm not sure where yours is coming from right now. But this is separate from the budget discussion. So, separate it mentally. It's not a budget discussion right now. This is our ARPA funds, and what you last said is what I'm trying to get to. What are our priorities? What are the best uses? What hasn't been committed yet? I don't have a finance team. What I suggest is, what I suggested before, what I'm gonna do is send an email to the VHA and GIN LLC and Habitat for Humanity to get a specific ask, and then put that back on the table. And then, so I think I've said all I can say, what I'm trying to do is get the highest and best use of every ARPA dollar we have. And these two programs, the one we already put in place is doing great work. And it will go generations into the future, you know. And so a lot of these other programs, it's just spending money, you know, for current use, and may not be as important as affordable housing is. And that's a decision that three counselors, at least, need to make. But this, so this is hard to digest. This is like taking a dart at a dartboard and going, well, you know, I see 27 million going to facilities. Maybe we should take 2 million of that. You know, and I'm just throwing that out there. I don't want to throw darts. So what I suggest is I'll come up, ask the proponent of the program to come up with a specific dollar amount, and absolutely, that should be presented to the entire council so everyone has an idea of how valuable or not the program would be compared to all these other uses that we're spending the ARPA funds on.
I would ask counselor that in this, these letters that go forward, that it's totally clear that this is not a letter from council, but a letter from a counselor, because it presents two very different scenarios to the recipient and two different impressions.
What letter are we talking about, Madam Chair?
Whatever letters you said you're gonna send forward to the, to four or five different directors.
No, I, I'll talk to you offline. I don't think you understood a word I just said. I'm sorry.
Well, maybe not, but talk to me online so we all understand. Are you going to send letters to the head of VHA and others who have funds applied to them and ask for details on their ask?
Glenn Young and I have already had a presentation to us on a proposed plan, just like we did by the treasurer. I don't know who else they've talked to on the council, because we're not allowed, because of open meeting laws, to just randomly talk amongst ourselves as counselors. What I'm going to do is set, respond to one of their emails and say, could you give us a dollar amount on this program that you presented to Glenn Young and Counselor Mevagee?
I see. And that response is going to go to you and Counselor Young, correct?
Well, then I've got a meeting challenge with my emails. Once the information comes back, I'll present it to the finance team, and then we'll get it to all the counselors for information only.
Kathleen, do you see any, anything to add to this discussion?
Chair, I would like to add something to this discussion.
Go ahead.
I suggest, I suggest if it's Habitat for Humanity and the VHA, that they come to the council and make a presentation. That is what the treasurer did. We all heard the information. We collectively deliberated and made decisions on that. And I think that is warranted in this case.
I would certainly support that. It's an oral form of communication that allows for some dialogue, which is usually productive and helpful. Other comments?
Chair, just real quick. Yeah, I would, I would support that as well. My understanding, and I very well could be wrong, but my understanding was that the VHA's largest request was ensuring that we carried forward the ARPA funding that was already dedicated to the program that they were discussing. But I could very well be wrong on that. So it would be good to get some clarification from them on that. from them on that.
Okay, very good. Would, would the two of you please provide a short list of those who you will, would like to ask to make a presentation to the council? And then staff could follow up on that to make that happen?
I think we could do that.
Is that amenable to you two, Counselor Mevage?
Yes, Chair, this would be unusual to have a briefing like this on a specific nonprofit request, but yeah, that would be fine.
This whole process is, is unusual. So Kathleen or other staff, do you see any questions or comments?
I don't think so at this time. I do know that Roy Johnson's actually watching this discussion, so hopefully that will help in reaching out to him. And I do think, I mean, we've done this with like the EMS district where the outside concession comes in to present what they're looking at doing and what funding they're requesting and how it would be allocated. So I guess my only, my only question is, does this have to happen by next week or can this wait until January?
Yeah, so that, what I got, number one, I, I don't think the biggest ask Glenn was to carry over ARPA funding for this initiative. They were talking about the depart, the treasurer's program when it came to ARPA funding that we had already funded. We haven't allocated any ARPA funding to this new initiative. If Roy is listening, please send us an email or get us on the telephone because I understood there was a very short timeline in order to get this done. So because the private developers need to make a decision, okay, is it going to pencil out as affordable housing or if there is no private public partnership in this program, then they're, they're not going to build those houses because it won't pencil out. So I don't know that it can wait until January, but if Roy is listening, send me an email. Let's get on the phone and find out what the timeline is.
So just for my clarification, Counselor Mevage, when you had your discussion with them, was there a specific request that came forward at that time for funding?
Oh, my apologies to Roy, but it kind of went over my head. I thought they were looking at a total program cost of about $8 million. However, the ask for, for our funding, for our public partnership with them, I don't know what it was, whether it was 1 million or 2 million. I did not get a specific figure. Roy, if you presented that, I, I'm apologizing for missing it. That's the, that's the detail I was going to go back to them and request.
Okay, are we set in that you will get a, the small list of organizations that you are requesting, presenting orally to council and you will get that information to staff and staff will make the contacts? Is that where we stand?
And determine whether it needs to happen next week or if it can wait until January would be helpful.
Who makes that determination?
I think the determination is the developers that are holding on to their capital assets.
Is it nothing about ARPA funds per se? And the timeline on them?
Now, we have flexibility. ARPA funding has to be committed in 2024 and spent, I believe, by 2026. So that piece is okay. It's really about if there's a timeline in which the proposal is coming forward that needs to happen sooner than later.
Okay, very good. So are we clear as to how we're going to go forward?
Yes, Chair, I would just like to add at this point that, that we are operating on a whole lot of assumption, you know, and I just want to make sure that we're not speaking for VHA because they may not want to make this presentation. We don't know, but we will look into it and if they choose to do so, then we'll get the detail that we need to do that.
Great. Well, okay, that is completing old business 2.4. So let's move to new business on the cemetery in Ag-20.
So I'll just start this out and Oliver will be presenting. So the council receives a request from a church in Battleground about having a cemetery on their property. Oliver and his staff have outlined what process, if council wants to go through that process, what that would look like. So Oliver will go over what that process would look like and then obtain direction from council if you would like us to follow that process or not. So Oliver, thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen, and good afternoon, counselors, Madam Chair. For the record, Oliver Ojek, or Community Planning Director, the county manager is correct. This item is a response to a request from, I believe it's a church in Battleground Old Apostolic Lutheran Church of Battleground. Their request is to allow cemeteries in the Ag-20 zone. And when we received the letter, we began to research to see what other counties allow cemeteries in their resource district. We found only two, Spokane, but that is a limited use in the forest designated lands. In Grant County, I said discretionary use also in the agriculture and what they call rural resource zone. So I just want to make sure the council is aware that under the revised code of Washington 3670, eh, 170, designated agricultural lands of long-term commercial significance must be conserved, protected, maintained, and enhanced for the commercial production of food or other agricultural products. So limiting where cemeteries could be allowed on those properties where a church currently exists is something that the county council may direct us to explore. If we do, if you do, we may write a change, make a change to Title 40 to say that only the existing churches could we allow to have a cemetery because if you make the use universal or allowed in every zone in the Ag Zone, right now, churches are only permitted as a conditional use. So limiting, there are only four churches now that are in the Ag Zone and their parcel size ranges from 10, 18 acres, 5 and 20 acres. So because we have to be mindful of the way this is going to be structured, assuming the council asks us to proceed, we will make sure that it is done in a manner that still continue to conserve, protect, maintain, and enhance agricultural, food production, and other agricultural products. Symmetry is not a use, as you will clearly observe, as a use that is complementary to agriculture. So that is really our research and will be our recommendation. If council asks us to move forward, we will amend Title 40, but it will only be limited because the council, not this council, but the previous council, I believe in 2019, directed us to make a similar change in the Forest 40 zone only. So we may do a similar thing, but they only limited it to churches that were in existence, let's say in 2019. So if you were to, there is staff to do this, we will limit it to the four churches that are already, already in the Ag Zone permitted. And that will be the process. We will go through the normal public process, a work session with the planning commission, a hearing with them, and then coming back to the council through your own public hearing process. So that in a nutshell is what, depending on your direction, is what staff will, will do.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I have a question. Of those four farm, or four churches, how, how long have they been in existence on those four lots?
I, I will go back to see because I believe that they may have been in place prior to when the plan, the growth plan was adopted in 1994. I have to go back and see. Since the adoption of the growth plan in 1994, we made churches as a conditional use. So it would be hard for me to say, well, all these churches occurred after 1994. I don't have that information. But upon our own research, we found out that there's only four churches in a currently Ag Zone district.
Well, I did a little research myself and the 20 acre, which was the, came, came in as a request, they, they newly built their church. I think it may be a year or two old.
And, and that's the concern, Counselor Marshall, that if you allow this, some people have looked at different churches as a business. So we have to be very careful in how, if you direct us to move forward, how the change will be crafted.
What is the bottom line for the reason for change?
Counselors, I really don't know. Some of the churches are privately owned and they would like to have symmetry for their aging population or members. If they pass, they will have a symmetry where to bury them if they so choose. If you look at many other churches, you take example Catholic Church, they have symmetry, but they're not located right at their Catholic facilities. Most of their churches are downtown and it's very difficult to have a symmetry next by, but they may have it also within the Obank Road boundary, but away from their church premises. So this is just what I believe the, those that are making this request want to see the opportunity to have a cemetery next to their church for their members. I don't know whether it will extend to non-members, that I don't know.
Chair, I have a comment.
It does look like a nerve.
Yes, Counselor Balca?
I grew up in this area. I'm familiar with these particular, this particular congregation and they have always primarily been in the Battleground Brush Prairie area. Oliver's right when he mentioned the Catholic, I'm Catholic, so I'm very familiar with like where our cemeteries are, but these particular congregations, they like, their preference is, and they've always mostly been in the rural areas. So I understand why they would want to have cemeteries where their congregations are mostly concentrated and where they have lived for a couple of generations. So that's what I know.
I see.
Chair?
And Chair, this is Kathleen. In their letter, they do say that most of their congregation currently uses a cemetery right now in the past and that particular cemetery, it's Elim, if I'm saying that correctly, it's filling up fast and there is not a lot of room for expansion.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I, this is a tricky one for me. One question that I would have for Oliver is, is, is this a situation where because of the rules and the regulations that regardless where they built their church, they would have a problem being able to put a cemetery in? Or is this more the situation that the specific lot that they chose to purchase and develop is not allowing a cemetery?
I think it's the letter, Counselor, currently in the agricultural zone, cemeteries are not, are prohibited.
Okay, so this, this is a, this is a struggle for me because I, myself, I also am religious and like to have churches to be able to function to the best of their ability. However, I'm also opposed to purchasing or, you know, purchasing a property and then asking to have the use changed. I, I think that it, it would be a bit irresponsible to do that. It would be different. I think Counselor Marshall's question was, was very spot on. I hadn't thought of that myself, but it makes sense. If that, if that church had been in existence prior to the GMA being enacted, then that would be a completely different story. But if it was a recent purchase and the codes, the regulations said that this can or cannot be done here, this is either an issue where somebody is, is purchasing and then asking to make a change or purchasing without having properly researched. So I, I think in this particular instance, as much as it pains me to say, I, I don't think that we should look into changing in this particular instance. It would set precedent for some of our designated resource lands being used for alternative sources. It also would make a difference to me if it was forest land. You know, because Ag land, once you put those, that cemetery there, it can't be reused. If it were forest or timberland, it's a little bit different because you can, you still have lots of trees available. Of course, you can't really harvest them or anything like that, but it doesn't so substantially change the use. So my, long story short, I, I feel for, I, I understand the plea, but I wouldn't be supportive of this.
Well, interestingly, understanding and appreciating your argument, Counselor, I would also give it a thumbs down. I'm assuming that you give it a thumbs down to proceed with honoring that particular request.
That is correct.
I would give it a thumbs down as well.
So there you have it, staff, and we will not proceed with that.
Okay, okay, counselors, that's your call. If the council were to give us direction to proceed, what we have stated in our memo is that this will be limited to the four current churches that are located in the Ag Zone and a total of 53 acres, but staff will take your recommendation and if the requests are online, they will also be made available of your decision not to proceed if we have three counselors saying so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So let's turn to item 3.2, the Annual Joint Commission on Aging.
So this is just the, there's an annual meeting where Commission on Aging and the council meet here in the hearing room or hybrid to go over what they've done and what's coming forward. So I didn't know if council had a preference on either January 17th or February 21st. It doesn't conflict with any council meetings. They're both on a Wednesday, so you do have, you know, work sessions and council time during the day. Is there any, does anybody have any known conflicts or recommendation on that? If not, we will just plug it in one of the days. Either day works for me. Okay, I'm not hearing any other feedbacks, so I'm going to take that as everybody's available on either day and we will let you know which one we pick and it'll be on your calendar. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Counselor reports. Counselor reports. Do Counselor, do any of our Councillors have reports today? Work session requests.
None today. I I have a request to have a summary of all the work session requests that we have already made for the new year.
We can get that. I believe they're on your calendars already.
Oh, okay.
We can, we can put something together for you. Thanks.
Policy issues.
Hey, Council, Jordan Bogie. Sorry to not be there in person today. I'm a little bit under the weather, but I do have three policy items for you today. The first is following up on a couple of weeks ago at the last council time, we reviewed the Clark County Transportation Alliance's policy statement, and I was asked to go back and chat with them and ask about a few different items that council had. And the first thing I found out is that the policy statement is pretty much set. There's not really an opportunity for further edits at this point in time. The second question that came up at last council time was around wanting to highlight the need for a third corridor across the Columbia River. And there is a bullet point in a bolded bullet point under the facilitating transportation, mobility, economic growth, and equity heading in their policy statement that does say, we place a high priority on long-range land use and strategic new transportation corridor planning to serve steadily rising population and commerce forecasts. And so that is their nod to the need for long-term planning around a third corridor in in there. And so, so it is not explicitly calling for a third corridor in in the strongest language, but it is, you know, discussing it in that section as well. So they are addressing it to to a degree. So I just wanted to to note that. I was asked-
Jordan, on what page do we find that?
That is on the first, or actually, it's the second page of the Clark County Transportation Alliance's statement that we looked at at the last council time. It is, it's not under the third, the number three action item, but below that, they have a section titled facilitating transportation, mobility, economic growth, and equity. And it is this bolded point, if you're looking at your screen right now, it is just, there's a bulleted list kind of in the middle of the page, and there's a bolded bullet down at the bottom of that list, and that has that long-range land use and strategic new transportation corridor planning note. So that that is where that item has been addressed in this policy statement.
Thank you.
No problem. The other, one of the other questions I got from council as we looked at this statement at the last council time was whether or not there is a discussion of light rail in in the document, and there is not an explicit mention of light rail in this document. Although in in having conversations with other Councillors, it was noted, you know, the number one action on this policy statement is supporting the interstate bridge replacement, which currently the plan does include light rail. So so there is not an explicit endorsement of of light rail in the document, but sort of similar to the the bullet, there is sort of that tacit discussion there under the I five bridge replacement. I was also asked to look at, you know, to what extent is this policy statement supporting multimodal forms of transportation? And there is a fair amount of discussion around multimodal investments and projects under Action Four, and they have a lengthy list of A through R on that project list, and projects that include multimodal investments in there include projects F, G, H, and Q on there. And so, so there are a number of of proposed projects and policies that the group is supporting that include multimodal transit. And finally, I think, Chair, you mentioned your number one priority is reducing congestion. And so I went back through this document and looked to see where either explicitly or as part of the the general project, which of them are aimed at reducing congestion. Obviously, the, you know, the the bolded bullet, talking about a strategic new corridor would help to reduce congestion potentially as well as projects A, B, C, F, H, I, J, K, P, Q, and R on this list. So a lot of them are aimed at reducing congestion or otherwise improving mobility in the region. And so this request comes comes back to council to see if there are three thumbs up to say, basically, Clark County Council does support this policy statement. And so that would involve essentially what they do is when they, when the Transportation Alliance presents their their list of policies in Olympia, they have basically all of the different organizations that are supporting this as logos attached to the document. And so if there are three thumbs up for the county council to support this, we would add the Clark County logo to to this as well to indicate our support.
Jordan, is the support given or to be given by the county all or nothing? Or is it that if there is something that we're concerned about, such as, let's just say, the light rail issue, that that could be pulled out and addressed?
So I think the short answer is is no. You know, essentially, what they're doing is they're they're handing out this this document, you know, as sort of saying, here are here are our priorities as as a region, and here are all the groups that that support this document. I think there is certainly a world in which, you know, we could have the council express that it supports this with with reservations or, you know, supports it except for a particular piece of it. But I but I don't know that then the council would want to put their stamp on it essentially. Although you could say, we are supporting this, but we're also going to send a note to the Transportation Alliance saying, well, we're not supporting this part of it or supporting it with reservations. But essentially, that is, that is the ask. It is a bit all or nothing.
Which is the assumption in a document that is as long and comprehensive as this is with so many organizations, that we can't really pick and choose the parts of it that we wish to segregate out. It would be too too complicated at this point in the the discussion.
I think that's correct. So it's really, on on the whole, do you do you support this document? Or or do you want to withhold your support?
And Chair?
Yes, Cat, go ahead.
So I strongly recommend that we go ahead and put our county logo on it. And we have, this is a very close relationship with the RTC and all the entities that are already sponsoring it. And, yeah, well, we're never going to get exactly how we want it to read because we're just one small piece. But I think unity of effort goes a long way. The RTC supports our public works projects pretty strongly in in the region. And of course, our legislature, we depend on them to fund our projects. I I think the best avenue, because at least three of us are on the RTC, and this is coming up at the RTC meeting as well, it would be good to kind of have this discussion that we're having now and that we had last time. I mean, that's really our voice to say, hey, here's what we're concerned about, you know, light rail, no. Other quarters, yes. And we're we're decades behind in planning for other quarters. I think it's our voice to keep sending that message. But I think we should endorse this. We we don't have an ability to amend it.
I I support the document.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I I would be supportive as well. I think that we should agree to it as it is. Nothing's ever going to be perfect. And I do agree with Counselor Medviji that the more organizations that come together, the stronger your argument, you know, so that will work for the betterment of of Clark County. I was curious, however, do we have any representation on this group? Who who what is this group made up of?
So there are, there are a lot of organizations that are part of the Clark County Transportation Alliance. I don't have the full list with me because I'm not in the office. I apologize for that. But if it's like thirty different organizations, there there are quite a few that are on the the CCTA. Now, the RTC is is part of it as well, but there there are a lot of lot of groups on here.
Chair, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Um, I I agree with Counselor Medviji. It's it's not going to be perfect. But I don't like the fact that the the third bridge wasn't mentioned. And to me personally, if you're just talking about the IBR, you're accepting the fact that where it stands today, light rail is included in the IBR, and I don't support that. And I know Clark County voters have not supported it repeatedly. So for that reason, I I personally don't support this. That's me.
Thank you. Other comments? Have we heard from everyone?
I didn't think I heard from the Chair. I mean, I mean, it comes down to-
You will in due time. How about other Councillors?
Yes, I was a yes.
You're a yes? Okay, that makes three, three yeses, which kind of gives our direction. My personal take on this is very similar to Counselor Belkot's in that I'm concerned that light rail is supported by virtue of the fact that the IBR is supported. However, you know, we also know that there are times where we satisfy spice. And by that, I mean that, and the the word itself, as you know, means that we take a position that is of lesser value than what we would prefer to take for reasons that are really different. And that's the case here. I think that having thirty, thirty-one organizations supporting the packet is is a good thing. I think it's good for the county. I it's probably pretty much a done deal anyway, that that support is going to be registered. And so going forth with that is is something that I would reluctantly vote in favor of. So I think you've got your your three thumbs up to proceed. Do you need anything further?
I don't, I don't believe so. Oh.
And we we talked to Jordan a little bit about the letter that goes forward with it. And please do not make that a laudatory and excited letter for expressing our support, but instead also expressing our reservations and concerns, because those do still need to be heard, and they are not heard, in my opinion, by this particular document.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So couple things. One thing I was planning to say before, and the one that just generated from what you just mentioned. So the first thing is, would it be something that that the council would be interesting in petitioning, having representation on that group? I really don't know much about it. So I'd be interested in that conversation. Then the second thing that I would say would be that I feel the same way as I did about the previous letter. If we're going to write a letter that says, yes, but, then I would rather not write a letter. I would rather just put our stamp of approval on there.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, so the the process, as I understand it, is really, I'll send an email back over to the folks at CCTA, specifically Ron Arp and Sean Philbrook at ICC, and say that, you know, we've gotten three thumbs up to proceed with the county's, you know, the county's logo as as a supporter on this. I I can, you know, I can write in the the email that it wasn't a unanimous vote, if if that's helpful. It won't be a a formal public letter or or anything like that, I don't believe, but just a just a communication to to that organization. And also, Counselor Young, I I do want to say, by virtue of Councillor's seats on the on the RTC, and I and I believe some of the other organizations that are involved in this process, we we do have representation on the Transportation Alliance through some of these other organizations that Councillors and the county is part of.
Okay, understood. So my my, I thank you for that answer, but question is, it seems like we were all, at least I was blindsided by this. And so where is that representation reporting back to the council to know what what is happening?
Can I just get back to circle back to the point that I think the Chair was making? So I I gave it a thumbs up to support this alliance document. But I have the same concerns that Michelle has, and I and I think the Chair stated as well. I wasn't real clear if the Chair was giving a thumbs up or a thumbs down. But if it is only three to two, or even four to one, I really do support the email going back saying, here's why. Light rail and not enough emphasis on additional corridors and congestion relief. I mean, I think whatever voice we have, we should take an opportunity to say it. And in an email to them, I think it should be said. And as well, I want to just restate that Karen, Michelle, and I are on the RTC. When it comes up there, we could make the same comments publicly. And all the all the, most of the participants that sign on to this document watch that meeting.
Very good. Well, I think that sets our tone. And Jordan, would you please share the email or letter that you send with the document before before actually sending it?
That's no problem. I can I can share that with with council before I forward that over to them.
Great, thank you. Is there anything else on work session requests or policy issues?
I do have a couple more items here for you this afternoon.
Go ahead.
So the the first one is, I got an email last night from one of our state lobbyists, Josh. I believe last time I I mentioned this as well, that there is a legislative outlook event on December eighth at eight thirty AM at the at the Hilton Downtown in Vancouver. And there were, there were two spots available. I found out that some of the folks that they were going to go with from City of Battleground have dropped out, and now there are three more seats available at this event. And as I recall, last time, council said that they thought that myself and Counselor Medviji should attend. I know Counselor Young is interested in in attending. He was not at the last council time, but he had expressed that to me previously. And I think Counselor Belkot is also going, but with not not as part of that group. So-
I think I'm part of that group. I I should be.
I think, I think you should be.
I think, I think you should be.
Uh, yes, but just as not as, uh, part of the, the seats that they, uh, you know, I think it's a reservation style event. Did you? Was I correct in understanding that you were going, uh, Counselor Belkot through?
Yes, Jordan, it was through the county, through the county.
Okay. Okay, great. Well, then in that case, I think, um, we have enough, uh, seats for, for everyone there at, at their table. And so then that would be myself, uh, counselors, Medvedje, Belkot and, and Young, I believe. Uh, but want to double check that, uh, with all of you so that I can finalize that and let them know for RSV purposes.
Very good. That sounds great.
Okay, wonderful.
If there was an extra ticket, I'd be interested as well.
Okay. I think, I think we, I'll, let me double check on that, but I think that's possible.
Anything else on policy?
So the, the final item that I had for you all today, uh, is that I have started drafting up, um, some of the legislative priorities that I have, that I have been hearing from, from all of you and from, uh, some of our other county departments. Uh, I was able to, to talk with a few, uh, of the counselors in, in our one-on-ones earlier, uh, but wanted to bring it up in this forum as well, uh, for your consideration. And so, uh, in terms of, of some of the legislative priorities, uh, the key topic areas that I have been hearing that, uh, that we'd like the county to focus on include housing and homelessness, lake management, indigenous defense and public safety, and infrastructure and development. And, uh, I can, I can go into this in a little bit more detail, um, if you would, if you would like. Um, I can also talk to, talk to some of you in the one-on-ones as well. Um, but really we see these, uh, topic areas as, as kind of a living, uh, document that we can adjust, uh, throughout the session as, as we need and, and to use as a starting point for conversations with our lobbyists and for the conversation that we're going to have, um, between council and our legislative delegation on December thirteenth at two P.M. Uh, and so it, would it be helpful right now for, uh, me to talk about that in, in a little bit more detail? Or I can, I can present in more detail, uh, at, at our next council time? Um, and are there, you know, if, if folks have had a chance to review and have any, any further thoughts on, on those topic areas, um, I'd be happy to, to hear any of that as well.
I'd suggest, Jordan, that we, uh, talk about it in greater detail, um, at our next council time meeting. We've had a chance to kind of think through the four that you just mentioned. And are there others or different items that we'd suggest? So I think that's the way I'd suggest.
That sounds, that sounds great, and I'm, I'm happy to do that. And, uh, I can, I can resend that, that document out and, and, um, would be happy to chat with any of you individually uh, between now or, uh, on Monday as well.
Great. And is that it for policy issues?
That's all I've got for you today.
Okay, anybody else?
I, I have a, a comment, Chair.
Go ahead, Counselor Belkot.
Um, I just wanted to, uh, make it, make it known to the, to the council. I was at the November first council meetings, so, um, those meeting minutes need to be corrected because I was there all day. That's it.
Uh, we just approved those minutes. What do they say?
Yeah, Chair Barman, this is Kathleen. So there was two, um, minutes that you approved today. So I'll work with Michelle because I, it may have been on the wrong date on that. So we'll double check that and bring back amended minutes during the next council time.
Perfect. And there's a constituent, uh, that we need to get back to. So I would rather get back to her sooner rather than later. So as soon as you and she have worked through that, um, either, uh, contact Jackie Lane directly and copy me or just send it to me and I'll make sure that Jackie gets it. She was.
I'd be more than happy to.
Thank you. She, she was pushing for transparency, which we all, of course, agree with.
Yes, and there, there was one meeting where it was undetermined at that time. So, um, we just need to make sure it's on the right date, but I am more than happy to respond to Jackie Lane as well.
Okay, did I copy you on her request? Or she may have copied you.
Yes, you did.
Okay, good. Um, Leslie Lopez, are there executive sessions today?
None today. Thank you, Chair.
Um, anything from you, Kathleen or staff?
Uh, nothing from me. Thank you.
No executive sessions? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. And, you know, this is the end of November. This is an important time on our calendars and just, we, we wish you all the blessings in the world for a wonderful end of year, end of November. Just please take care because it's not a healthy time out there for, um, different, uh, problems with, uh, with viruses going around and, and just knocking people right off their feet. So please be careful, take care and God bless.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Okay.